I would like to call to order the city of Cherryville's regular city council meeting of Monday, June the tenth, two thousand twenty-four. I will ask everyone on your here please stand for our invitation by Dr. Reverend Bill Lowe, First Presbyterian Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's certainly a privilege and an honor to be with you here this afternoon and to read a portion of God's word and have a prayer before we begin this meeting. I'm looking at some words from Psalm one twenty-seven. Unless the Lord builds a house, its builders' labor is vain. Unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchmen stand guard in vain. In vain you rise early and stay up late, calling for food to eat. That's right. Oh, Jesus, master builder, as we work day by day on the house of life, may yours be the plans which we fulfill. Yours the strength in which we work, yours the specifications we work to. Yours the oversight of each detail. And yours the glory when the scaffolding of the body is taken down at last and the results of our labors are seen. Unless it is you who are the real builder, we work in vain, oh Lord. On you may we rely to provide us with all we need for our work. God bless, we pray. This mayor and this council and the city and above all the citizens that they represent. God bless them. And together may we find that we have indeed built a part of the eternal city in our day and in our time, as you have granted. In the holy name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I make this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
I would like to call to order the city of Cherryville's regular city council meeting of Monday, June the tenth, two thousand twenty-four. I would ask everyone on your here please stand for our invitation by Dr. Reverend Bill Lowe, First Presbyterian Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's certainly a privilege and an honor to be with you here this afternoon and to read a portion of God's word and have a prayer before we begin this meeting. I'm looking at some words from Psalm one twenty-seven. Unless the Lord builds a house, its builders' labor is vain. Unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchmen stand guard in vain. In vain you rise early and stay up late, calling for food to eat. That's right. Oh, Jesus, master builder, as we work day by day on the house of life, may yours be the plans which we fulfill. Yours the strength in which we work, yours the specifications we work to. Yours the oversight of each detail. And yours the glory when the scaffolding of the body is taken down at last and the results of our labors are seen. Unless it is you who are the real builder, we work in vain, oh Lord. On you may we rely to provide us with all we need for our work. God bless, we pray. This mayor and this council and the city and above all the citizens that they represent. God bless them. And together may we find that we have indeed built a part of the eternal city in our day and in our time, as you have granted. In the holy name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I make this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
The first item on our agenda tonight is to approve the agenda as presented. I would like direction from council on the agenda approval as presented.
Make a motion we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and two seconds to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none. Next item is approval of minutes of A, city council regular meeting of May the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and B, our city council work session meeting of May the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. What is the pleasure of council on approval of the minutes as presented?
I have a motion that we approve both sets at the same time, city council regular meeting of May thirteenth and the city council work session of May twenty-eighth.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in second to approve the minutes as presented of A, city council regular meeting, May the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and B, our city council work session meeting of May the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. Next item is the mayor's comments. Construction of the UGJ has been delayed due to bad dirt that was found. The reason it is bad is because it will not compact to give a solid foundation to build on. We are in the process of installing a French drain so the water will run to the retention pond, and this will clear up the problem. And I did notice today they were doing some little work out there, but they have started back work on. Little League and Dixie Youth are in the process of wrapping up their seasons, and American Legion baseball was in full swing at this time. The parking lot at the corner of Main Street and Mulberry has been paved and striped. It is a nice addition to downtown, and the city incurred no cost whatsoever on this project as the property belongs to Mr. Patrick O'Leary. The pad for the new splash pad has been poured, and we are now waiting on the concrete to set up within the next couple of weeks. Once that occurs, we will anchor the stations down, and we will be ready to open the splash pad. A temporary fence was installed to separate the splash pad from the pool as the pool did have its grand opening this past Saturday. One of our boom trucks blew an engine, and it will have to be replaced immediately. This has caused a delay, excuse me, a delay on getting some of the storm debris picked up. The old drain pipe that collapsed at the end of East Academy has been removed, and a new pipe has been installed by our city employees. The cost of this project was approximately ten thousand dollars. Contractors had estimated this project to cost between forty and fifty thousand dollars to repair. So I want to send a great thanks go out to our public works group on saving our city the cost of this project. In closing, I want to remind all our citizens of our Independence Celebration on Friday, July the third, at the Brutusville Football Stadium. Cherryville will host numerous food vendors, games, a beer garden, the swinging medallions van, and fireworks will follow. Please make plans to attend this event as it is one of the largest events to bring crowds from all over to our city. And this concludes the mayor's comments. We'll go to our next item is special recognition of city employees' years of service. And at this time, I'd like to ask one of our city staff, Lisa Millwood, if she here, yes, if she would come forward, please. Do you have any one else with you?
No, it's just me.
Okay. This is the lady that brings me a stack of checks every week. And she makes sure that they're all signed, that I don't miss any. And so this certificate is awarded to Lisa Millwood in recognition of ten years of service to the city of Cherryville. And it is signed by the city manager, Brian Dalton, and Mayor H.L. Bean. Congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is citizens to be heard. Any citizen that would like to speak at this time may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and remember, comments will be strictly held to three minutes. Now, this citizens to be heard is not to do with the budget. That is in public hearing, but if this is anything else that a citizen would like to speak to the council about at this time. So do I have any citizen that would like to be heard at this time? Maybe that's good. Okay, we'll move on then. Item nine is consideration of the public hearing in reference to adoption of the proposed physical year twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget. Our city manager, Brian Dalton, is here to lead us through this. So at this time, I would entertain a motion from council to enter into public hearing.
Second.
May I have a motion in second to enter a public hearing at this time? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Okay, we are considered in a public hearing now, and I hope everyone has their budget. But I think our city manager can give us a synopsis. So you have it for now?
Mayor, council, yes. You know, several months ago, we gave you a copy of the proposed budget that was prepared by myself and department heads throughout the city. We had our meeting, we went over all those items. And this year, the recommendation is that the tax rate remain the same at forty-eight cents per one hundred. The electric rate and the water and sewer rates remain the same. There not be any increase in those fees. This year's general fund, the budget is seven million, two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. The electric fund is seven million, two hundred and one thousand, eight hundred dollars. The water and sewer fund is three million, four hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred dollars. So the total recommended budget for this this coming year is seventeen million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is an increase over the current budget that we are in. The current budget that we're in now is sixteen million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, which the proposed budget is one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, or eight percent increase. Now, some of the reasons for that increase. Obviously, we are looking at a five percent COLA, cost of living, adjustment for all city employees. Five percent is helping us get to where we're at least in the mid-range. You know, we've went over that for several months, comparing ourselves to other municipalities throughout Gaston County, and we still have some room that we need to grow to get our employees comparable to the other municipalities. The other thing is, this year, we are, we have added a full-time recreation director. We do have an additional position in the electric department to add another lineman. So that is, that is a lot of the reason for some of the increases. And as you know, we have to have a balanced budget. So as we have grown and as our revenues have increased, we have to show that we spend out the same amount of money to meet the requirements from the LGC. So that's basically the highlights of the budget. And any questions that I can help answer, I'll be glad to.
Do I have any questions from council for city manager?
I think he's done a good job already explaining and answering questions.
And I would like to point out too, as Councilwoman Hoges and I were talking today, we have, we have run the numbers, we have called municipalities around us, we've called Duke Power, we've looked at REA. We've, we've done every analysis we can. And right now, the city of Cherryville does have the lowest electric rate around. And I think that's something we should all be proud of.
Thank you, Paul, and I hope our good media folks here will put that out. I hope that will be the headlines, that will be the headlines.
Okay. Any other questions from council for city manager concerning our budget?
Yeah, I just, I want to commend you and Dixie and the department heads on this budget. I think it, it sets us up well for the next five years with the growth that we got coming. I think this is where the groundwork has been laid. So thank you for preparing and getting us ready so that when this other stuff does happen, it doesn't surprise us. We're ready for it, we've prepared, starting today.
That's right.
Kudos to Dixie for me too. And getting it to us so early gave us time to really fine tune and go through. We've had occasion after occasion where city manager has posted in his weekly reports, please, if you have any questions, bring them to me, bring them to me. And maybe I can settle them before we bring the budget to our citizens. And I think that has really helped. I do like that idea. I think we've gotten it faster than we've ever had it before. And it's really helped me because I know I looked at this thing five, six weeks ago, and I started highlighting in yellow things that I was concerned about. And of course, I went to city manager and he explained exactly, you know, what was going on.
Well, I want to thank Brian and Dixie also. But I feel like over the next five years, as we see these proposed developments we have on the books, as we see those come to fruition, and if these housing units sell like we hope they will, you know, it may be a need for additional employees, but we'll see that as we go. Because a thousand units, if they, if they sell like we hope so, we may have to add more personnel.
You know, and I want to point out that, counsel, you did a great job in the past. Like last year, if you remember, we added the two additional police officers. This year, we're adding, you know, we added the full-time recreation director and another lineman. You know, the fire department has submitted a grant, the safer grant, where if approved, it would pay for three full-time firemen for three years, chief officer, or four years. So it would completely pay their salary, benefits, everything for four years. So we're trying to stay ahead of this so that when the growth does start really coming and it starts developing, that we're prepared. We're not, you know, sitting back and then trying to find people to hire and get going.
Is that grant for the volunteers?
No, it's full-time.
Full-time, full-time.
And what we would do is, right now, we have two firemen that are assigned to a shift full-time. So what we would do is we'd add a third to each shift. There's three shifts, so we'd add three full-time firemen.
I want to thank Brian and the staff in all too. And I think, I think one of the things that's really helped is Brian has set up your, he's had to look at it from our side and everything too. And we know how you are with figures and how you look at them. And we really do appreciate it. And I think that's one of the things that's going to get us. I'm, I'm on a lot of committees, and we're right now looking at five-year plans and even with the state on some things that I'm doing. And to have, have a person to come to me at the ballgame the other night to tell me how thrilled they are that we have a recreation director, that they can talk to, that understands now the needs for the kids is a big plus for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being proactive in that area.
And Paul, I can really appreciate Brian because I used to sit where he sits.
Exactly.
So I really do appreciate you, Brian.
I appreciate you, thank you.
And I think the gym and the splash pad is just two more amenities that we can add. It's really going to help the younger people especially. And, and that's what counts, is what the mothers and the fathers see that their kids get by living in Cherryville and not just the schools.
And I think, I think everybody sitting here understands that, you know, we get a lot of people talking about the roads, and we understand that. And that's something we're going to work on, we're going to continue to work on. And as we get some of these other issues fixed, you know, like Academy Street that just caved, you know, Johnson Drive that we had to fix that pipe, we have one on Hampton Drive we have to fix, we have one down at Pink and Six we have to fix. Once a lot of those type issues get resolved, I really feel like we're going to accelerate on getting some roads paved once we get that taken care of.
Okay, sounds good, looking forward. Okay, if nothing else from council, do I have any citizen that would like to speak in public hearing at this time? Again, I think that's, that's, that's a good sign. So if not, then I would entertain a motion from council to exit public hearing at this time.
I make a motion to exit public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to exit public hearing at this time? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none. So we are out of public hearing at this time. We're open now for discussion on the budget that has been presented. Let me hear from council what they think. And I know you voiced your opinion to our staff, but what do you see overall as the budget?
Well, I think we have a good budget that's been prepared, and it's one that I think we need to accept it as presented, it's been worked on, reworked. I make a motion that we accept the budget as presented for the year twenty-two, four, twenty-five.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion in the second on the floor to accept the budget for twen- year twenty, physical year twenty-two, four through twenty-two, five, as presented tonight. Any other discussion before we vote? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none of the issue. And this, okay, next item is item ten, consideration of proposed city fees. And we need to go on page forty-seven.
Page forty-seven.
Fifty-three.
Yes, mayor, council, this is, if you remember, we presented this to you a couple of months ago to look at. And this is just, for example, underground electrical service. Let's say somebody wants to have their electrical service changed from where it attaches to the house to have it put underground. Currently, we're paying more for, for the wire and, and the material than we're actually charging. So that's, issues like that is what brought this up and why we're looking at making some changes. We're not trying to necessarily make money, but we don't want to lose money on, on some of these services. So if you look at page forty-seven, most of the area there in red is where we're recommending a change. So meter damage fee, that's, you know, if somebody goes out and tampers with their meter or messes with their meter, or they tear it up, which does happen occasionally, you know, it's a two-hundred and fifty-dollar charge. The underground, it goes from two-hundred and fifty dollars for the first one hundred feet to three-hundred and fifty dollars for the first one hundred feet. The, the area light installation, right here, we're recommending four dollars per foot after the first hundred feet. Currently, we're at three dollars. So it's just, it's just situations like that where we're trying not to lose money on material costs because you know, the, the price of the material has gone up drastically over the last several years. And we're trying to just make it to where we at least come even on that. Probably the one that we've talked about the most that, that I think everybody thought about is the garbage container fee. And what we were looking at there, you know, anybody that already has a, a container, they don't have to worry about it, they're, they're done. But, you know, and currently, we have a replacement cost. And I believe Councilmember Freeman had an issue where he had to buy one actually one year. If your garbage, you know, unless, unless we tear it up and we're trying to empty it, you know, if you have, if you want a new one or, or something happens to yours, there's a replacement fee currently. What we're proposing is that take the new development, you know, those five hundred houses. As those houses get built and people are ready for, for service and we take a container out to them, we're proposing that they pay a one-time fee of seventy-five dollars to get the container. You know, right now, we're currently buying, say we buy three hundred containers. It's about eighteen to nineteen thousand dollars for us to buy three hundred containers. So that's why we're proposing this, is where, and, and there again, the seventy-five dollars is basically what our cost is when we buy those containers. So we're trying to just make it to where we break even on the containers. And we did check, and I believe it was Shelby was the one that, that does this exact policy is they charge you the first time when you buy your container. Now, you own that container. So if you live at one oh four, you know, M Street, and you sell that house and move to, you know, one oh four Vista Drive, you can take the container with you, it's yours, you own it. So you wouldn't have to buy it again. The other ones is, you know, some of the water and sewer type fees. If you look on page forty-eight there, we're recommending a three-fourth water meter go to three-hundred and fifty dollars, a one-inch water meter go to five hundred dollars. The boring, just down a little bit on that page, the boring or cutting involved, we need to, to change that to four hundred dollar fee just so we, you know, the price of asphalt has obviously gone up. And that covers our cost where when we make a cut, we can get that covered. And that's probably the biggest changes we have discussed.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian, right below that, where it talks about the flat rate sewer fee.
You on page forty-eight?
Yes.
Yes. Inside rate thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Is that per month?
That is, yeah, that's for people that that's all they have. That's the only service they have because obviously, we don't meter a sewer.
Sure.
So if somebody, if somebody only has sewer, if they live inside the city limits, they pay the thirty-six fifty. If they, if they live outside the city limits and they're on our sewer system, they pay the seventy-three dollars.
They, they're not a water customer.
Correct.
They're just a sewer customer.
Yeah, that's for people that are only sewer customers. And we probably, we probably only have a handful. We, we don't have very many.
Yeah, but I'm sure there's a very few of those.
Have we not had a charge for burn, permis before? Is this new? I noticed.
Five dollars?
Uh-huh.
Have you been charging?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not a change.
That's always been there?
Yes.
So that's the same.
I don't see any of them. I like, well, uh, these groups, Memorial Park.
Yeah, now cemetery fees are already said. If you, if you remember, page gives those to you.
Yeah, I think that, that takes care of it basically.
I mean, the biggest difference is, is the containers for garbage pickup.
I'll make a motion to approve the city fees as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to, uh, put into effect the proposed city fees as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same. There is none.
Is this effective immediately or do I?
Do one first.
Clarify that, don't we?
Yes.
Maybe clarify that in your motion.
I will amend my motion, uh, to say, um, I make a motion to approve the city fees as presented effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second of the amended, uh, motion. Uh, all in favor of the amended motion as presented, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same, and it does carry. Okay, we'll move on to item eleven. This is consideration of public hearing in reference to amendments to our zoning ordinance, section six point five, the cluster development. We have a planning and zoning, uh, director, Richard Elam here. That's page, uh, yeah. I'll need a vote, a motion from council to enter public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into public hearing at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we, uh, all opposed the same. There is none. We are in public hearing. Okay, uh, Richard, you got the four now. That's page fifty-four. Fifty-six. Fifty-six. Okay, Richard, go ahead. I'll read you.
Give you a brief recap. This is a recommendation from my department to the planning board on March the eighteenth this year. And went through a lengthy discussion. They gave a recommendation not for my, what was presented, took them by me, but to not, to do away with all cluster developments. And Mr. Strapp here, one of my members, he gave at the, uh, city council on April eighth, he gave an explanation as to why, cause we already have R nines, R twelve, R fifteen, R fours. And because we put the party living back into the zoning ordinance, it's already there that they could make developments with nine thousand square foot, twelve thousand fifteen, et cetera. There's, there's no reason to have cluster developments anymore.
That would be under specials only?
That would not be, be, uh, under regulars only. But the, uh, special use permit is up to all cluster developments. That's where you're reducing an R forty, you know, forty thousand square feet to twenty thousand. R fifteen to ten thousand. R twelve lots to eight thousand and the one that I wanted to do away with was the R nine to six thousand square feet. So the recommendation to the city council is to do away with all cluster developments. So on April, I gave the explanation I ought to have on April eighth. And let's see, what else is? City council on April eighth continued discussion of this to be a work session on April thirtieth. And then on April thirtieth, they continued again to tonight. So that's where we're at. The city council still has not given the decision. So I can go through the page fifty-four to fifty-six if you would like me to, again. Just need the, uh, decision by the council. I'd like to leave it as it is. Do what? I mean, accept my proposal, accept the planning board's proposal, just leave everything as it is.
Your recommendation was just to take off the R nine, uh, six thousand, right?
Right.
In the highlights in yellow, right.
Right. I'll skip through.
And check that out.
Yes, ma'am.
And R twelve increasing the setbacks to six.
Yes.
And this is under cluster development section.
Yes, it's at six point five. I'll go through page fifty-five. What you see in yellow is what I propose to add to the ordinance. Because during this last cloud of rubble, the builder and myself saw that they needed to have the lot, let's say number three, the lot needs to be increased from five feet, I mean, six feet to, uh, sixteen feet, we needed an extra ten feet because otherwise we would have my house set in six feet over street. And that's, and for the season, and for episode before, number three is the lot lit between the side lot lines should be measured at the front of the, uh, street, not back in the middle of it somewhere. And the lot cul-de-sac sometimes, you know, during the pile shake.
Can actually be reduced.
It lit, the width of the streets would be smaller than that, I prefer to add. As long as they've got to six thousand square foot minimum, we need the side setbacks. And then E. Every lot approved for development shall be for the purpose of building a single or a two-family dwelling upon each approved parcel. Parcels shall not be confined from side or rear parcels to make that one, that parcel larger. That way you don't have an owner coming in, taking this one, this one, and one to the rear to make his lot bigger. You're cutting the city's revenue, cutting your taxes. You won't be getting in, income on water, sewer, et cetera, trash pickup, all the fees you would not be getting. And also the developer would be losing money too. He wouldn't be able to build a house. He's just selling a lot. That's the reason for E. And then you go to the last page, that D. It was written at fifty percent, but not more than eighty-five percent of the lots. When they're sold at, at fifty percent, the city is gonna have to try to keep on move, et cetera, et cetera. But my recommendation is to line through the fifty percent, but not more than eighty, you know, not more than eighty-five. Leave eighty-five percent of the lots in units or so. At that time, the homeowners association will be responsible for maintaining all available lots and up in spaces. They'll send a letter to whoever owns them, make sure they can't move or they don't own and send them a bill. It takes work off the city staff to send them a letter. That's the reason for adding that. So I give it back to the council for your recommend, you know, your approval or disapproval or changes.
Uh, do I have, uh, any citizen that would like to speak concerning the cluster development, six point five cluster development at this time? Okay, if not, then I would need a motion from council to exit public hearing at this time.
I have a motion to exit public hearing? Second.
Have a motion and a second to exit public hearing at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same. There is none. We are out of public hearing now. So we are now open for the council on discussion of what was presented by our planning and zoning director, on his recommendations.
Richard. I probably should know the answer to this, but I, I'm not sure. In a regular subdivision, just a regular subdivision. Do we have homeowners associations just in a regular?
None exist in city council.
None exist in just a regular subdivision?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Unless it will, in the cluster developments.
They would have homeowners association.
Okay.
That's correct. And there's, have very strong rules.
Okay. Any other comments by council?
I don't have any problem going along with Richard's recommendation.
You won't put that in form of a motion?
Really? On the convention that we accept our zoning director recommendation.
Sir? Have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second that we accept the recommendations as presented in public hearing by our planning and zoning director. Any other discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same, and there is none. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. We're about to go to, uh, item twelve now, consideration of appointments to the Main Street Committee. And we have our downtown director, uh, David Day here, and that starts on page fifty-seven.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Before I go in now, I want to read a letter that we received. Uh, Mayor was nominated by the, by our Main Street program to be a North Carolina, uh, Main Street champion this past year, which is a huge honor. We've had six or seven Main Street champions and Mayor H L was, H R Bean was our last one that we had and went down in March and was awarded that by the Main Street, uh, program. And we received this letter from Senator Ted Alexander. It said, Dear Mayor B, I would like to congratulate you on being recognized as the Main Street champion. This is an incredible accomplishment for you and your community. Thank you for all that you do for the city of Cherryville. I'm wishing you and your family all the best. Sincerely, Senator Ted Alexander. So congratulations again.
Anybody who would like to see the awards? I have them hanging in my office on the wall, so, uh, I'm just not one for big act of legs and stuff like that, but I'm glad you did bring it up because it's for the community as well, not just for me. It helps Cherryville and I think that's what Senator Ted meant in his letter. It's, it, it's for the city as well, so. Thank you, David. Thank you for reading that.
Okay, we'll move on into the nominations for our design team, economic development team, and promotions team. On the design team, up for reelection is Steve Pantin and Sherri Bingle. They would like to serve another two-year term. Uh, in the economic vitality team, we have a new person, Daryl Shepherd. He will be doing a two-year term. Sid Struth is going to be filling this. So this is a place that she moved on to city council. She was on the economic development team and then she moved to city council, so we're filling her term. And to keep our rotation going, it would be a one-year term. So we don't everybody go off at the same time. And then on promotions team, Angela Walker, she served as our chairperson now for, uh, four years and she's gonna go back on and can begin us. So those are the new members that would complete our teams for the Main Street program.
Okay. Looks like you got a good team there.
I might, make a motion to accept all appointments as presented by David Day.
My second.
Okay, that's short and sweet. Okay, I have a motion to accept all the appointments as presented by our Main Street director, David Day. Have a second to the motion. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed the same. We have none, so it is unanimous. Okay, thank you, David. Thank you for those comments. Okay, then now we'll move on to item thirteen, which is consideration of the requests from ABC Board. This is in reference to the city seal on the new store sign. And, uh, that, that sign as presented, as proposed, excuse me, is on page fifty-eight. Where the seal, the city of Cherryville, North Carolina seal is in the bottom right-hand corner. Uh, this sign, I would gather to say that fifty percent of our people don't even know where the sign is. Uh, it's, it's, it's on First Street. And the only way you can see it is if you're coming from Bojangles and you make that turn to shortcut into, to the town. And as soon as you turn, you're almost past it because you're right there, that big thing where they sell the ice sheet. And the, and the actual sign is on, uh, Great Outdoors property. It's not on the, uh, ABC store property. And their request is that this sign is so old, I don't know how many years it's been out there, but it has deteriorated somewhat. And they said since they were gonna redo the sign, they thought that they would, uh, put the seal on there, uh, of the city. Now, we had our city attorney doing some research to see if this was legal. Uh, she gave you a whole bunch of different examples of how it's done throughout the state. Sometimes they put spirits, sometimes they put liquor, sometimes they put the city's name. Uh, it just, it varies about how they do it. But, uh, we did have our planning and zoning director. She's still here. He researched it also with, and it may have been the same person, Quinlin? Is that who you talked to?
Yes, sir. Quinn Woolyard, and he's the ABC director. Yes, sir.
Richard talked to him and, uh, he said he had, uh, that there, it wasn't against the law and there was no, no problem as, as far as if we wanted to do it. But my question is, do we want to do it? And, uh, it's not up to me. It's up to this council. I know we discussed it at our last work session. Uh, I think the big thing, controversy that brought it up, like I said, most people don't even know it's there. But I think the big controversy was when it came out in the Cherryville Eagle, uh, Lincoln, uh, paper. It was blown up as about a fourth of the page, uh, showing the new sign. And, and I mean, that's okay. I'm not blaming anyone for that because that's the way the sign would look. And, uh, they were only showing exactly where the seal would be. And actually blowing it up like that showed how small the city of Cherryville's, uh, seal was on there. Made it look like about a quarter or, or a fifty cent piece on there. But, uh, still, I know there's probably some controversy on it, uh, so it's open for discussion now by council.
Mayor, uh, throw out one other option. Notice the last one in the series that Yancy sent us, had a seal for the ABC Board. Their own seal. So they could come up with a charitable ABC Board seal and put on it instead.
That's a great question. That's a, that's, that's a great comment.
Another option here.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay. And that sort of takes the city out of the picture. I mean, in a way, and in a way it does it. Cause it says Cherryville ABC Board, not City of Cherryville.
We do appoint the members of the board and, so.
Okay. Any other discussion by council?
No, I like my two recommendations. The council's seal such as that, what's on the city hall, what's on our water tanks, different things, you know? We've got our steel. We own this, right?
It's on the taxi.
Yeah.
It's running due. We don't own that.
Yeah, it was on the taxi.
But, uh,
Aya.
What's your general feeling?
Well, I, I have, I really feel like even though the citizens of our town, however, many years ago, voted for the city of Cherryville to have an A B C store. I know, you know, there's a good segment of our population that disagrees with alcohol. So I just, I just don't, I think it would be better for everybody that we not put the city seal, that we not put the city seal on the sign, that we not approve it, prove it.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
No.
Well, um, they're, they're waiting on some decision, yea or nay. So maybe if I could get Gary to word it to the fact, we would approve the sign if the A B, Cherryville A B C seal was there, replacing the city of Cherryville's. Can you do it that way? Is, is that okay to do it that way?
Do they even have a seal, but do they have a seal?
Well, that guy could probably do it.
Oh, yeah. We have one or not, I really don't.
Yeah, you got the, if you look at the, the email that, uh, Yancy sent, Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, A B C Board, they got their seal on here. So they can basically copy something.
Nineteen forty-seven.
I'll make a motion that we not approve putting the city of Cherryville seal on it, but encourage them, within this motion, to come up with their own seal for the Cherryville A B C Board, which we do appoint, uh, to use on the sign. But it's long gone out, but you get that page?
I gotcha.
Okay. So you're saying it wouldn't have to come back to council?
No.
To go down it as long as it doesn't have a seal? Okay, we got that worded correctly?
I got it, sir.
See if you figure out one.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. I'm not going to repeat that motion. I was gonna say, uh, Councilman Gary Freeman has made that motion that we remove the city of Cherryville's logo and replace it with one for the Cherryville A B C Board. Okay. Any other discussion by council? If not, then all in favor of this motion do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none. It is unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to other business. Uh, the post other business that I have, uh, I know, uh, I had scheduled the meeting in Alabama, then I had some health issues too that I'm dealing with. But I know, uh, Mayor Protem, Jill Puitt, was at the Juneteenth celebration. Could you give us just a little, uh, synopsis of how it went, how many people were there and?
I couldn't tell, because I didn't stay for the entire thing. David probably can reiterate more. He was there working with them, but they did have food trucks. They had other vendors there. There was even some, uh, person running for an elected office had his place over there. Uh, they had a lot of music, they had speakers, and some of the singing, which was really, it was really nice, nice singing. And, uh, they had, it was well planned, uh, and all the ladies were very complimentary of that, appreciated us coming and speaking. David had worked with all of it, uh, Donna Farager, um, who's a, a Main Street program too, she was there involved. Did I miss any of that, David?
Our police department was there.
Yes, the fire department was there, they were seeing, they had their, that was a bouncing, a swatting thing over there beside the chamber office. Kids had something to do, and they were having a good time. Food was wonderful. They had great food there. And so it went really nice.
Okay, good. Uh, David, is anything you'd like to add to that then?
The first year, it was our first year doing it, and it was smaller, but I kind of did count there, because I went out, I ran, I, I was around three hundred eighteen. And then I kept having to go back to my office to do different stuff, so I'm sure I missed, but we had a lot of people that came, watched things, looked at the vendors. We had eight vendors and three food trucks, four food trucks. And, uh, and the, those vendors, writers, all that stuff, so they were real pleased with the turnout. Had a great article in the Cherryville Eagle that they did on the Juneteenth, and, uh, it was really, it really helped. And we actually had a lady from Kings Mountain who I was posting live on Fa- you know, from Facebook, and she drove from Kings Mountain over to see what we were doing, and then invited our group to go over there, so.
I know John, uh, Councilman John Abernathy was there last year.
He was there this year too.
Both years. That's two stars for you.
I hope it gets, I hope it gets bigger every year. I hope it gets bigger and bigger. You know, I went last year really not knowing the true meaning of it, uh, and it was really kind of an eye-opener.
Yeah. I, I didn't know it. Uh, I had to get page to, uh, I did the proclamation the first year, and it told about how it originated in Texas at the end of the Civil War, and they hadn't been informed that the Civil War was over in Texas. They were still fighting, you know, and so that's where it all stemmed from, the, the Juneteenth, uh, celebration, and then they did, uh, celebration. But anyway, uh, the other item I have to bring up is, uh, we have our Electric Cities Convention in August. And it is the twelfth through the fourteenth, and it's going to be in Asheville this year. And I know several of staff, uh, of course, we want our, uh, finance director there and city manager. And, uh, I know several others were invited by Electric Cities, including myself and, uh, Councilmember Janis Hobus. So, uh, the thing about that is, it's going to conflict with our August council meeting of the twelfth. It'll be the twelfth through the fourteenth, so I would, uh, like for council to consider maybe, instead of having it on that Monday, that maybe we do it on that Thursday, the fifteenth, which would be when we re, or when the representatives return, and they could give you an update of what's going on with Electric Cities. But I just want to throw that out there for recommendation from council.
You need to make a decision.
Yeah, I think it's good. I'm good with that. Let's make a motion. So I make a motion that we move our regularly scheduled city council meeting of August, the twelfth to August the fifteenth. At six o'clock here in council chambers.
Okay, very, very well put.
Same time, same time.
Yep.
Same time, six o'clock. Okay.
Second.
Then we have a second to the motion. Uh, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none, so we'll need to get that posted in the paper, which we've got plenty of time. Okay, now I open up other business. Any council member have any business they'd like to?
I have heard from a few veterans, three, at, at Vicki's one morning about being disappointed that we didn't have a Memorial Day parade this year. They felt like their fallen comrades should still be honored every year.
I would say the, the Leeches Hut did have a.
Yeah, they did have a memorial service over there at A.
I know we had the parade last year, and they were disappointed we didn't continue it.
They had golf carts. Some of us walked.
There's only various few people.
Yeah, I think Kelly Hastings walked with us, didn't he?
He was there, but he didn't stay. He went on to another one, but he spoke to them.
No, like I say, if you can do something, then it, it'll build each year and get more, you know, more people involved. So we shouldn't, shouldn't stop just because we had a few people the first year.
Okay, that's food for thought. Okay, we can consider that. Okay. All right, uh, anything else from council? Here's your chance.
I, I, we can't leave here without saying this, because it said every month about the potholes. I have more complaints.
We actually have already said. But I agree with you.
Well, all the people that complained to me, I said, okay, I will say it again this month.
N C D O T did get up here and fix those on one D, but
Somewhat.
They're still rough, whatever it is they did.
They don't, they don't know how to fix them either.
Well, I'm telling you this. I had a dental appointment in Lincoln. And going into Lincoln, I was checking out, uh, Chief, let's see, he's still here. The chief had told me about this place, uh, on the left over there behind Dollar General that, uh, does haircuts and stuff. So I thought, I'm just going to run by there because I'm way too early for my appointment. So I rode over there, and I thought my cars won't get beat to death before I could get back out on the road.
It's not terrible, it's everywhere.
They're everywhere. I know they are.
And then I turned on at the stoplight there and go down that road, and there, it's like the big bump where they replaced all the sewer lines. Then when you turn there at the stoplight, it's smooth as silk until you get the four-way stop. And there at the high school, there's potholes everywhere. There's, I mean, we're not unique in having those. It's in a lot of the other towns too, and, and I know we just finished up, uh, some bad storms and a lot of rain and stuff, so, uh, this is time of year that they're probably at their worst.
But I do tell these people that complain to me that we are going to be working on it, and we have a list. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at how many we've repaired over the last year, it's probably more than it was repaired the last five years.
Well, probably so.
I mean, we had a list of over a hundred, and got them down to about ten or fifteen, but of course, somebody, another pothole takes its place somewhere.
Yeah, well, on Cherry Street, you know, we, uh, Chris, we put gravel in that one on Cherry Street, but of course, the gravel's already out. So it's just, that's just kind of a waste of time sometimes, but anyway.
I was told tonight that my street had a new water line, and I do not believe it.
I went down that street because I had a complaint that, from somebody, it said Spring Street is terrible. It's terrible.
Yeah, and I do not, I do not remember when they did a water line all the way down. I know they patched it, patched, patched, patched. Uh, Kevin Abernathy could tell us, but I'm going to have Chris, I'm going to have Chris King check with him tomorrow, but I'm saying we did not put a water line.
Yeah, we did. Yes, we did.
I must have, I must have.
It's been several, it's been several years.
It's been several years.
Yeah, they did.
I do have one question, Brian. Someone asked me about North Mountain, where they've been working at different sections on the side of the road. Are they, are they doing something down there?
Your old building?
Yeah.
Down at the mill?
Down at the mill, down at the old door mill.
Yeah, the gas, the gas company was down there last week or two weeks ago.
Okay, I, I told them that, that they may be, uh, doing some preparation for the renovation of the old mill.
Well, they are doing that as well, but.
Yeah, it's, it's a group of investors. It's not one investor.
But that was the gas company that was down there.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
All right. Anything else from council? If not, we'll go to staff. We got anything from staff?
Nothing from staff.
These come tonight.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, I have a motion on the floor to adjourn in a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. We are adjourned.